My name is Chris Pitts. I am the current president of the Wobbin Area Council. I'm part of the debate working group that put these debates together and have been doing so for 14 years. How do you like that, huh? So this is day two. We're going to work on the school committee today. But let me just tell you a little bit, the four area councils are Wobbin, Upper Falls, Newton Highlands, and Newtonville. And the working group is made up of people from each one of those councils. I should tell you right now that yesterday's debates for the mayoral and the city councils are up on our websites and Facebook. You can go to wobbinareaconsulate.com to find them. You'll be able to find them on the other area councils as well. But do like our Facebook so you will get notices. We don't post a lot, but you will get things like this debate and other important forums that will hold throughout the year. Each area council is made up normally of nine elected people. They are elected, and you'll be able to vote for us in the upcoming election at a separate table when you go to do your voting. There's an area council, if there's one in your catchment area. There are not area councils everywhere. There's only four of them so far. And you can vote for us during early voting, starting October 28th, I believe, and going through November 1st. So let me tell you how we got here. We received, so we put out a survey, and we got a lot of questions, really a lot of questions. And so our job was to try and mold those questions down, and we delivered them to Adam and all the other moderators. And they're the ones who have the final say about what they're going to ask you, and we have no privy to that. So I would say if you've done your homework, you probably know what they're going to ask, for the most part, maybe not everything. So those questions haven't been shared with anyone. So let me tell you who Adam Bernstein is, our moderator. You're in great hands because he's the director of the Fig City News. He's been writing about Newton Public Schools since the newspaper's inception. A longtime Newton resident, he has conducted in-depth interviews with the local candidates and leaders. Adam combines his perspective as an active NPS parent with fact-based, policy-focused style of journalism, which derives from his experience writing energy policy research as an investor. Adam's a graduate of Emory University and Dartmouth College. And so this afternoon, he brings all that expertise to the table, and we're happy about that. The format's really simple, and I'm just going to break it down. Questions you want to try and answer within 45 seconds. You'll see Gregory over there holding up a sign that'll give you a warning, and then for 15 seconds later, he'll tell you to stop. It's up to Adam if you want to go further or whatever. You know, the idea is to find out who you guys are and what you're going to do in office. So that's the bottom line, and he has sway over that. So let's just get to the meat. Rebutts generally are 30 seconds, but again, Adam's discretion. And I think that's pretty much all the housekeeping we need to do, and I will now turn it over to Adam Bernstein.
Thank you, Chris. I will give short biographies provided by the two candidates. To my immediate right is Victor Lee. Victor Lee is a Newton native and parent. He is a superintendent fellow at the Arlington Public Schools and a doctoral candidate in education leadership at Harvard's Graduate School of Education. Victor holds an MBA from Wharton and is an expert in data-driven decision-making, district-wide policy-setting strategy, and budget management. To Victor's right is Jim Murphy. Jim is a longtime Newton resident and retired social studies teacher and administrator in Boston, Weston, Everett, Weymouth, and West Hampton. He is running to bring his deep experience with educational policy and how it translates into classroom practice and student learning to the school committee. Thank you both. According to the four area councils survey, Newton residents are most concerned with how our city is managed and how those decisions affect our public schools. They cited issues of curriculum, standards, budget, and labor concerns, but above all, they asked how we can sustain educational excellence. These are engaged Newton voters participating in this election. Let's begin. We'll direct this first question to Victor. How are you different from your opponent as it relates to your future actions and goals on the school committee if you're elected?
Thank you, Adam, first of all. I believe there are six major differences between my opponent and myself. I'll start with a similarity, I think. We're both, I would say, relatively good people, have been respectful of each other, so I do appreciate that and want to highlight that first. In terms of philosophical differences, my top priority is academic excellence for all children, both kids who are perhaps needing a little more extra support and folks who are at the top of proficiency level. I'm the only candidate who has experience working at the cabinet equivalent level, worked directly with superintendents and school committee members, as well as also understanding the private sector side. I do not believe in legalization of strikes. I believe in data-driven decision-making as a key element, and I'm independent from any organization and have not chosen to seek or accept any endorsement from any organization in the city. And last but not least, I am endorsed by every single city councillor who has made a choice in our race, and I think those relationships are critical.
Thank you. Jim, how are you different from your opponent as it relates to your future actions and goals on the school committee if you're elected?
Well, first of all, excuse me. First of all, my experience is direct in K-12 education. I've spent my entire professional career as a teacher and administrator. I have spoken to every kind of student, I've taught every kind of student, spoken to every kind of parent and community member you can imagine. And I have a very unique skill set from having been both a teacher and administrator that I have been able to see policy and make policy on one end and have to enact it on the other. The real difference between Victor and me is that I regard schools as being parts of the community and first and foremost. Victor is very data-driven, but what data-driven actually means is top-down education. And I think that's probably the biggest difference.
30 seconds rebuttal?
First thing is, I always acknowledge you have been a teacher in the classrooms for longer than I think I've almost been alive. So there's a lot of credit to that, and there's a lot of great experience. I think that's critical there, so I want to give full recognition there. I do think it's important to understand that I am very much for the community. I do believe there's a bottom-up and a top-down approach, and I think the proof point of that is the fact that I have knocked on several thousand doors personally, myself, and had so much communication with many of you. And hearing all the support that's come from you shows that I think I understand what the community's actually asking for.
Jim, any rebuttal?
Sure. Yeah. And I think, you know, the election part I have no quibble with, but what I don't think Victor fully understands is that schools are communities within themselves, and the groups of people, students, teachers, staff, all have a voice in what goes on in the school, rightfully so, because this is how we model what a community is to our children.
Continuing on the theme of curriculum and top-up versus bottom-down, in a recent Newton Teachers Association bulletin to its members, NTA President Mike Zillis quoted an elementary school educator as saying, "I have to reconcile myself to the fact that Newton is no longer a place where we teach students, but rather one where we teach curriculum." Do you agree or disagree with this statement and why? And Jim, go first this time, please.
I don't think this is a problem that's peculiar to Newton, but I do think that there's something to that. We have undergone 40 years of neoliberal reforms in education that have been driven by standards that have ended up crowding out deeper learning experiences for students on an incremental basis, and worse yet, crowding out the civic mission of schools. I think that Newton, you know, has a particular part to play in that. I think part of the reason that I'm running is to reestablish a balance between, you know, the kinds of, you know, fact-and-content-driven skills teaching that we need to do and giving students, teachers, families, agency over the education that happens here. And I think that's what's going to get us off the standards treadmill.
Victor, same question. Do you agree or disagree with Mr. Zillis's statement and why?
I'm sure that that's his perception, and I think it's important to respect and understand that's, you know, an angle from which he comes. What I would say is the direction in which we need to head is one in which curriculum is not the exclusive focus. It's a key element of education, but I think those of us who have been in education long enough know it's also about the teachers that are there, it's about the curriculum that you're using. These things are all multifactorial to drive, but ultimately will be success. It should not be the case that things are purely on the curriculum basis, and it's also important to recognize that school committee members are not there to micromanage the curriculum on a data basis. We do approve, we do give our insights. I have a deep, actual curriculum background, and so there's elements that we can do to provide guidance on that, but the concept of education is about a much broader preparation than just one little aspect of that. And if that's what the direction that we feel they're going, we need to remedy that.
Discussing preparation and expectations of students. The MCAS has recently been removed as a statewide graduation requirement. Should Newton install a local version of a district-wide common assessment test as a graduation requirement? Victor?
I think the key, short answer is, I think that something has to be on the table. And I was with about 56% or 57% of Newtonians that voted to keep MCAS as a graduation requirement. It's a complex thing. I understand there's many good counterarguments to why MCAS had certain flaws or was very narrowly tailored and, you know, went to a test. But fundamentally, what we need is an ability to see performance of students over time in a longitudinal way and also transparently so that folks, both parents and students themselves and teachers, can all understand what exactly is happening. If you don't have a system like that, whether it's MCAS or something that's comparable to it, you don't have a good way to actually understand what's happening in the classroom and what's happening in the dynamics, and therefore you don't have transparency that you need to have the community engaged in.
So I think we should not be about the business of, you know, re-engineering MCAS through the back door. We can collect that a whole bunch of ways. We do not have to do it through high-stakes testing, and I think that that would be a problem. Interestingly enough, I will be at a press briefing tomorrow to, you know, help deliver, I'll be sitting in the audience, but to, you know, sort of help deliver a proposal that, for what should replace MCAS, that involves project-based learning, that involves portfolio assessment. I will be joined by one of Victor's mentors, Jal Meta. And, you know, I think it speaks the world that, you know, we are trying to stay stuck in the 19th century in standardized testing, that is behaviorism with a dollop of eugenics, rather than teaching to the 21st century, critical thinking skills, empathy, communication.
Jim, could you please define behaviorism with a dollop of eugenics?
Sure, sure. Yeah. The, I'll go backwards. The dollop of eugenics is really where standardized testing comes out of. It comes out of the eugenics movement, you know, and, but the behaviorism is how we tend to teach and certainly how high-stakes testing. It's a series, it's learning by way of rewards and punishments, and that's exactly what high-stakes testing is. And developmental psychology, learning science says, that's not the way people really learn.
Victor?
Yeah. So a quick response to that. You mentioned, which I appreciated, Jal Meta. Jal Meta is a wonderful professor who's looking to, as you said, deeper learning aspects. He is also my doctoral advisor at Harvard School of Grad, Graduate School of Education. Even he would agree that there are important elements of substantive testing that need to be had. You're right, you don't need to overexaggerate. I think you're totally, you're right that it can be problematic in its own way, but you need to have a balance. You need to have a balance of ability to also have these newer concepts of deeper learning, but also ways to be able to compare and understand what people are performing against ideally as objective a standard as possible, as consistently across the district as possible, because that's the only way you can really understand how district-wide performance is happening.
Okay. Yeah. Again, I think that there are lots of ways to gather data. I will tell you that Jal will speak out against reintroducing MCAS or end-of-course tests. That's precisely why he's there tomorrow.
Let's go over to the budget, which of course influences curriculum and tools offered to our students and teachers. The large variables affecting the NPS budget have been widely discussed: rise in costs, correcting poor decisions under prior leadership, and high community expectations for NPS. As a school committee member, how will you help convince skeptical voters that city budget allocations to NPS should increase at a higher rate? Jim?
Well, I think the communication part is key. You need to take the time to unpack, you know, the arcana of, you know, budgets. I think that the reason that, you know, budgets are so problematic here, one, is that they're simply allocated by the mayor. Something in there needs to change, either on the communication of where the money is, what pockets we're drawing out of, or maybe even changing the way that we allocate budgets in the city. But short of that, we need to make it very clear to Newton residents how much the schools need, where that money's coming from, and we need to not mix in, you know, sort of the smoke and mirrors of potential reimbursements or finding efficiencies later. The folks in Newton voted for two budget exclusions because they knew what they were getting. They did not vote for a budget override for the general expenditures because they didn't. We need to change that.
Victor?
Yep. Do you want to repeat the question again to make sure?
Sure. The large variables affecting the NPS budget have been widely discussed: rise in costs, correcting poor decisions under prior leadership, and high community expectations for NPS. As a school committee member, how will you help convince skeptical voters that city budget allocations to NPS should increase at a higher rate?
Yeah. So I, thank you for repeating that. I agree with Jim that communication is one of the most important things. And when I, again, as I said, talked to thousands of Newtonians in the last, since March or April, when I really started getting involved in this, a lot of folks, actually, I think once you explain to them the potential trade-offs and costs, they get it and they understand it. Part of the challenge has been that there's been a lot of mixed messages about declining enrollments, maybe not understanding how the system in our districts works. That degree of lack of clarity and also even some of the conversation around the strikes that threw people in different directions has led to a lot of kind of murkiness. So we need to do more, I think, in the ways of, like, town halls that were beginning to be done at the end of last year, those were in the right direction, just a little bit late in the game, to explain where exactly is the money coming from, where do we go with this. We can address, I don't know if there's an opportunity to go into a rebuttal here too, but I did want to address the quick question about smokes and mirrors about...
Let's give Jim the opportunity for the first rebuttal, then we can come back.
Absolutely.
Were you finished with your main response?
That's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I really don't have a whole lot of disagreement with what Victor just said. I think, you know, transparency is key. I don't think that, you know, Newton residents are against spending money on schools. I don't even think that they're necessarily against spending more money on schools. They simply want to know where it's coming from and where it's going, and I think we can do that.
Victor?
Yeah. So I largely agree. This is, I think, a great point, and a good thing that two educators are agreeing on this element. The one point that I wanted to respond to was this quick comment about smoke and mirrors for seeking reimbursement, you know, reimbursements. I do think it's very important that we're looking not just within what we can do with the NPS budget, but also look at opportunities outside. The state has, in my personal opinion, not necessarily updated their funding formulas appropriately to reflect the dynamics of special education in Newton. I've actually already started working behind the scenes on this, and though it's not exclusively due to me, we've already seen some impacts on this where improvements in reimbursement of transportation costs for SMED has helped this past budget. So those kind of actions, I think, if we continue to push down the road, we're going to improve the situation. It's not just a theory, it's actually being done.
Okay. A follow-up to transparency and clarity, and this one will be for Victor first, keep switching off. Chris Breski, the current school committee chair, has made NPS budget transparency, including setting an NPS allocation baseline of $296 million, which in his view reflects true costs rather than the current $292 million as a public priority of his. However, a larger direct allocation to NPS instead of a lower amount supplemented by one-time free cash and stabilization fund disbursements, as is done now, may reduce the city's flexibility in making allocations and potentially its AAA bond rating, which relies on various accounting ratios on paper. Is transparency or flexibility in collaborating with the mayor's office more important to you?
I actually don't think they're mutually exclusive, to be honest with you. I think that you can be transparent and you can have some degree of flexibility. The part that I think is going to be very critical is, as we saw from the last year, working with the city councillors, working with the mayor, and having that earlier conversation about where we are hopefully will get us to a better place. And, you know, for whatever we have our opinions on about the prior mayor, there's going to be a new one this coming year. And so I think the folks who have already demonstrated they can build those relationships to work with those same folks are going to be able to be more transparent in communication of why we believe that there's a need to push for more funding allocation, more direct allocation, in my perspective. And that's going to be the part that hopefully we won't get to the situation very late in the game where there's complete disparate ideas of what exactly everyone's looking for and answering, right? We need to get to those relationships and those common understandings much earlier in the process with earlier communication.
Jim?
Yeah, I would agree that they're not mutually exclusive, but if you were to, you know, sort of back me into a corner and say choose one or the other, I would choose the transparency because I trust the voters in Newton. If they have the information that they need, then they can make the ultimate decisions on who's in office to make those budgetary decisions. But I do think that, you know, it is really important that we not, you know, sort of push costs aside or hide them, you know, in, and hiding's maybe too strong a word, but, you know, sort of sequester them as if they weren't really part of the budget. I'll take the kindergarten aids as an example. That's $800,000 that should have been part of a percentage allocation, and because the school committee wasn't honoring that commitment, it didn't get into the budget until, you know, very late in the game.
Continuing on the topic of allocations, this was one of my favorite questions submitted by the area council survey respondents, to Jim first. What is your view of the proper role of the mayor in his or her capacity as a school committee member?
That's an interesting question. I mean, I think it's common to have mayors on school committees. Very often, though, they are, you know, ex officio and not quite so powerful in terms of the budget allocation. If I were to be able to wave a magic wand, I think that I would keep the, you know, the mayor on the school committee. I mean, it's the central part of local government, it's the biggest chunk of it, and he or she should be there. But that same magic wand waving would take a little authority away from the mayor in terms of just determining an allocation and give some of that to the city council.
Victor?
Yeah, the mayor is one of nine votes on the school committee. So I think that's a critical thing to understand is that, they, I agree with Jim, they have to have a voice in that because they're a critical part of the budget sitting process. Actually, quite frankly, they have a lot of, almost very unitary executive kind of degree of control over the budget. And I think the experiences that we saw from last year is that you want to be able to work with them as a colleague and again, talk to them early on. We're not going to be in everything, but at least be at the table, literally together at the table, to have those conversations earlier on so that we don't get to these points where, again, we're seeing strong differences of opinion surface only late in the game.
Jim, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I just would go back on, I think that there's a structural, you know, issue there. And I think, you know, the fact that we have a very strong mayor sitting on the school committee is, you know, it really kind of underscores that problem. And now that we've got a mayor that has endorsed an entire school committee that he'd like to see, I think that's especially problematic.
Victor, you are one of the people that the mayoral candidate, Mark Laredo, has endorsed that your opponent just finds problematic. How would you respond to that?
To me, it's very simple. There's a narrative that's going out there that's saying that we're beholden to a mayor because they've endorsed me. Every single city councillor who's made an endorsement has chosen me. That includes people who are agreeing with Mark and people who disagree with him. And you can't say you're going to be beholden to people who hold very different opinions. It would also have been very unwise, in my opinion, to have the only person who's likely to become the next mayor decide that I'm not going to accept his endorsement of all of them. To me, the bigger question I'm more worried about is, I think there has to be independence from organizations with whom you're going to have to deal with in a negotiation table, like the NTA. Got to talk to them, they're very important partners, and I have that dialogue, but to me, the bigger question is not so much are you endorsed by the potential future mayor and other city councillors, it's are you endorsed by somebody with whom you're going to be responsible for negotiating with and potentially against when you're on the school committee?
Jim, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just, you know, I think that, first off, it should be noted that I ask for no endorsement from any sitting politician, any former politician. Talked with a bunch of them, did not ask for a single endorsement, and there are a number of them I would have rejected. So in terms of, but, you know, I think the other piece is, you know, this, what I think is a false distinction that, you know, Victor is trying to make between being beholden to an organization and being beholden to a person. Now, you can decide which you think is, you know, sort of more significant, but I do think it bespeaks the idea that Victor does not seem to regard, he regards the Newton Teachers Association as an adversary, and I think that's part of what has to change.
Sorry. To me, it's just, again, this comes down to understanding how school committees work. Your, one of the five fundamental responsibilities is to negotiate with the union. And in 80% or 90% of the cases, I do believe that those interests will be aligned, but sometimes they won't be. And the responsibility of a school committee member is to represent the district, not just one subset of the group. And so that's a very big difference because that's baked into the core responsibilities of a school committee member, unlike an individual's endorsement. So to me, those are night and day things, and it comes down to whether we really understand how school committees operate.
Okay. Let me, thank you both for the conversation. Let me pivot, I think, something related to this conversation. The area council survey respondents, we did receive several questions related to the 2024 Newton teacher strike. There has already been a lot discussed in public, both of you along with the other candidates have made several statements. As the moderator, I've attempted both to respect that this forum is for the area council members, and my job is to get the topics that they are curious about into this discussion as well as try to keep it as forward-looking and salient as possible and not simply kind of relitigate what happened in the past. So with that wind up, I'll direct this first to Victor. Almost all the current school committee candidates have criticized the various parties' tone and communications during the 2024 Newton teacher strike. The current NTA contract will expire during the next school committee's term. If there is another strike, how should the school committee act differently next time than it did in 2024?
Well, I don't want there to be another strike. I mean, that's, and so there, the first question, I guess, is, if you want to act differently, you got to start talking early with the key folks and actually listen to them. And I've had the opportunity to sit down with Norm, Brian Normandin, and Mike Zillis and hear their perspective, because I think it's very critical for me to understand from where they were coming. And there's actually things I think I agree. The strike didn't happen without there being multiple points of failure. I do think there's opportunities on all sides. The mayor probably could have come to the table a little earlier. Some members of the school committee, I think, did not do a good job in communication, and I'll leave it out of that because some might be future colleagues. And ultimately, though, it is the NTA's decision whether or not they're going to go on strike. I had less issues of what they were arguing for. I thought coal increases were reasonable, the AIDS was a reasonable fight. I had more of an issue with how they did it and the fact they went for 11 days. That's the issue that I want to try to resolve down the road. We can address it more, but yeah.
Jim?
Yeah. First, let me start with that half of that 11 days was because the school committee refused to meet. So, and all of the time was made up. So let's just, you know, get the math right. My position is that strikes don't happen when there's good faith. Part of bad faith, I think Victor alluded to, which is, you know, poor communication and, and I think, you know, a very adversarial relationship. I think that the school committee that negotiated during the strike did a very poor job of exercising good faith, starting with trying to reneg on the agreement on kindergarten aids and moving right up through the hiring of the law firm and the rest of the negotiation. But the real culprit is the model that we use. We use a zero-sum distributive model, which I think encourages secrecy and ultimately duplicity, and it makes for poor communication and, I think, poor outcomes.
So Jim, as a point of fact, we did cover for Fig City News the Newton teacher strike?
Yes.
And there were meetings between the school committee and the NTA the first half of the strike?
There were.
Yes. We can debate how productive they were.
Okay.
But I just would like, if you would like the chance to respond to that point of fact?
My understanding was that there were, that the school committee was refusing to meet. And so that's, you know, I wasn't reading Fig City at that point, so had I read it, I might have been prompted, I might have been prompted to ask a few more questions, but my understanding was that there was, there was little communication.
Okay. Victor, go ahead.
I think this is an interesting element of potential differentiation, and I want to, and I think it's important to surface it. I think both of us do not want to see a strike happen, and in some ways, we're more common in terms of recognizing that you have that multiple parties sort of engage in this conversation to have it. I think the big difference is, I want to make sure that we're addressing the conditions that led to that strike, and that starts with understanding different perspectives. If, in my opinion, you're able to resolve those fundamental conditions, I don't understand why, this is again where we disagree, why you have to push for legalization of strikes. To me, teachers are so essential and so key to the success of students that they should be in the classroom as much as possible, and it's incumbent on us, as school committee members, to make sure that they don't ever have to feel like they have to get to the point where they have to strike again.
Okay, Victor, thank you. You just put a slightly different adjacent topic on the table, which is legalization of strikes. So want to give Jim a chance to respond?
Absolutely.
Oh, on the legalization of strikes or?
They're either a rebut to Victor's rebuttal, or Victor, you did put legalization of strikes into the conversation, so I just, maybe you should clarify why you did that.
Because this is one, I think it's one of the biggest points of differences that we've outlined between ourselves. I do not believe that strikes should be legalized. I don't think, hopefully, it will ever have to be a case if we can truly work on the conditions that generated this past one.
Thank you.
My, my rebuttal to Victor really is, is maybe not all that much of a disagreement, but it is embedded in the model that we use for negotiation that I think breeds bad faith negotiating. And, and I think that we need to move to a more interest-based, you know, form of negotiation. In as far as the right to strike goes concerned, I've been very clear about this, that, you know, that the right to strike is ensconced in international human rights law, has been since 1948, was explicitly, you know, put out there in about 1966. And I'm not in the business of picking and choosing my human rights. It's associated, it's, it's associated with the right to free association, and I believe that that, you know, it holds some serious weight. Now, that doesn't mean I want to strike. I also believe in the right to abortion. It doesn't mean I want people to have them. Good faith negotiations is the key.
Victor, quick rebuttal?
Yeah. So not such a rebuttal, but I think an additional piece of color. If we look at the Unit 8 educators contracts, Article 4 specifically acknowledges that strikes are legal, and it says that there is no, I don't remember the exact wording, but basically they're not asserting the right to go on strike. So to me, even the NTA understands that this is something that is not ideal and not something that we want to do, and they don't want to do it. So to go beyond and say, we got to, we got to make sure that we can legalize it for, understand, you know, human rights arguments, that's going even beyond what I think the NTA is agreeing in their own current existing contracts.
Yeah. And, you know, and that, that's boilerplate language in almost all contracts, and, and I understand that. But you have to understand that 95% of the teachers voted to go on strike, right? And the reason for that is the bad faith posture that the school committee took. It's not, Newton's is not the only school committee that's done that. What has been done over the past 10 years is for school committees to take advantage of the illegality of strikes, to come in with their final offer and tell teachers, we'll just wait to meet until you decide to meet our terms, knowing that they will not go on strike. That's the problem.
Okay. Let, let's put a pin in that instead of asking you to speculate on what the last school committee was thinking. Thank you both. We, as I mentioned, we did receive several survey respondents about the strike, and that conversation back and forth, I think, did address several components of those questions. So thank you both. Moving to communication. Recently, very recently, four current school committee members signed an open letter disagreeing with social media statements made by an NPS parent who is also running for city council. Many of these same committee members have in the past expressed frustration with quote-unquote "social media rumors" and "communication confusion." What is the role of social media in the school committee's communication with the community? Victor?
My personal take on it is the social media should be, just like any other formal channel, managed carefully and with great responsibility. That's not to say that individual school committee members shouldn't have their, you know, right to express themselves. I think that's, that core First Amendment part is pretty critical. But I do think that we need to have a little bit more thought and discipline, I guess, upon those issues. If we want, you know, if we wanted, we can address the issue of, to be straightforward, John Jaminis, I think, who is the one that's been talked about in that conversation.
Okay. Let's, Jim, the question of what is the role of social media if you're on the school committee in communications?
Well, I think in terms of me, my zero presence in social media probably says all you need to know about how I feel about it. I, I'm not on Facebook, I'm not on any of the social media platforms, and I am a much happier person for it. I understand that that's, you know, part of, you know, communication these days. And, you know, people are going to say what they're going to say. But I, I think, like in, you know, interpersonal communication, even though it's just out into the void sometimes and you think you can kind of say what you want, you put something out there, you're responsible for it. That's just that.
Thank you. Victor, is there some, if there's something you would like to say about how you would act as a school committee member related to the current situation, that would be great. If it's generally about the current situation, we can move on.
What I would say was I would focus on a, what is directly relevant to education context. So if there were something that come up that says, oh, we want to understand how, you know, how do we deal with transgender participation in sports? That's a very discreet thing. That, in my opinion, falls within the permit or the remit, I should say, of an education question. But if it's getting into broader opinions of personal, you know, takes, I said, I'm going to defer to let everybody speak for themselves rather than, you know, officially trying to pines something as a school committee member.
Jim, any response?
You know, the only thing I think I can add to that conversation is that, you know, I have some, you know, working rules for how I conduct communication. I, if I have an issue to deal with, I ask myself, is this an email response? Is this a phone call? Is this a personal conversation? And I think, you know, to the extent that we can ask ourselves those questions, we can manage our social media much, much better.
Okay. I think we have time for about two more questions and then brief closing statements. I think we're back to Jim. NPS enrollment has not recovered from an approximate 6% decline during COVID. Should increasing enrollment be a goal of the school committee? And if so, how would you assess that goal?
Well, I think, I, I think that's hard to assess. You know, you can look at the, the school age population and make some, you know, inferences as to, you know, whether your population is likely to go up and go down. But what you don't know is who's going to move into town and want to take advantage of the schools. I think that, you know, there has to be an eye toward what housing looks like in Newton. There has to be a consciousness of, you know, what it means to, you know, allow the numbers to drop or to build them up by way of school choice. And I think that you, you really have to, really look hard at, at, at your numbers. Try to make the best predictions you can and, and, you know, make your decisions accordingly. It sounds like a vague answer even as I say it, but it's dealing with a lot of contingencies.
Victor?
So again, I start with the data. And it's approximately 1,000 kids, I think, ballpark that have left the school system in over the last, call it, five years. That is not just simply a demographic change. That is a meaningful reaction to things like concerns over return to school policies during COVID, concerns about the strike, and concerns about the challenges that we faced with the budget conversations this past year. So to me, it's if you, you know, if you want to address that, yes, this decline in enrollment that is unnatural, that is coming from folks exiting the system is something that has to be resolved at its root level. So insofar as that's important, I do believe increasing enrollment is going to be critical. But yet again, adjust the funnel, fundamental issues. And that, I think, comes back to, again, people worried about the rigor, people worried about whether kids and teachers are going to stay in school. If we can address those factors, I do believe we're going to restore the reputation of Newton, and people will come back to the schools as they should.
Jim?
Yeah. I, you know, I don't disagree with, with, with most of that. But I think part of getting, part of what we need to consider is why people leave for public school, for private schools outside of some of the, the more incidental things like, you know, the, pandemic and such. And a lot of the reason people prefer private schools is because they can engage in the kind of deep learning that public schools have crowded out by way of standardization and testing.
How would you analyze, going back to Victor, the issue of neighborhood schools? How do you prioritize the importance of walkability and local neighborhood elementary schools with the costs of maintaining and staffing those buildings?
Yeah. So to me, that's a very distinctive element of Newton and its elementary schools. My guiding principle would be wherever possible, we want to try to maintain a neighborhood school environment. Now, there are certain schools, Ward Underwood, that come to mind, where this is a tricky conversation. And with, you know, significantly declining enrollments in some of those areas, we do have to think long and hard about these questions. It ties back, I think, to my prior response, that if we're able to start to change the conditions where people can return, then maybe we won't necessarily have to deal with, with, what you don't want to do is create a rash decision, say, oh, we're going to combine these two schools together just to solve short-term costs, which actually may not even help the short term because roughly 87% of our costs are actually in staffing sides, the issues, which are not, you know, things you can immediately change. If you're going to change buildings, that's a much longer-term conversation. So what we have to understand is where do we think that enrollment is going to be, you know, many years out? So I think these are all very related and chained questions to one another. If you solve the question of why people are leaving, you might, you might still be able to preserve a neighborhood environment and keep your budget a little bit more secure.
Jim?
Yeah, I've, I've had a lot of opportunity to kind of think of this, and, and really from an odd happenstance, I've been doing morning standouts in front of all of the schools. Just about done with my second round. And so I've seen a lot of the beginning of the day at every single one of the schools in Newton. And there is a, a huge community, you know, component to that, with parents saying hello to one another. I had no idea what rock stars the crossing guards are until I started doing this. And, and, you know, I think, you know, to the extent that we can maintain the walkability in the, in neighborhood schools, we should do what we can. I mean, you know, if the, if the numbers drop out, you know, if the bottom drops out on the numbers, we have to make hard decisions. But I think that, you know, we want to try to maintain, you know, the, the character of neighborhood schools.
All right. The first question was directed to Victor, so Jim, a quick closing statement, if you have any directed to you?
Well, I, I just go with, I think that, you know, the school committee needs some educators on it. And I think that my experience in education has been very directly K through 12. There's not really anything that I, well, no, I won't say that. When you start saying I've seen everything, something else pops up. But I have seen quite a bit. I understand very intimately how schools run and how school systems run. And I think that, you know, that kind of experience is precisely what is needed on the school committee.
Victor?
So first of all, thank you for, for moderating this. And thank you to the area for, concerts for being able to make this an option, a possibility. You know, for me, it comes down to what is going to be best for kids. And in many cases, I think there's been too much conversation about, well, if you're only thinking about kids, you're not thinking about the other parts of the system. And I want to be very clear, educators need to be respected, I'm one. And educators being done well, having a good environment to work in is also going to help kids. I think there's sometimes a little bit too much of a bifurcation of it's either one or the other. But when decisions have to be made, I believe it has to be student-centric, even if it's not necessarily great for educators, I think, myself. I have the experience, as I said from the very beginning of this conversation, to understand how things really work system-wide. And that's the level at which the school committee is tasked to operate, not micromanaging classrooms. And so while those opinions are very important, you need to understand and hear from teachers. That's why we have, in part, something like the NTA. What we need to have are people who are going to speak up for the families-
Victor, a few more seconds.
Yep. And for the students in the classroom. That's what I'm going to be able to bring to the table.
Great. Okay. Thank you both.